All right. There we go. Good evening and welcome, everyone. It is now 7:02 and I call the Northborough School Committee into open session. This is the open meeting of Wednesday, October 4th, 2017. And we'll jump right on to our agenda.
I would like to make a motion that we approve the minutes for the Northborough School Committee open meetings on Wednesday, September 6th, 2017.
Thank you. For a second. Any comments or discussion?
None. Sue?
No. They looked, wow, almost too good. They were very, exactly. I second that. They were very thorough.
We'll take that.
All in favor? Unanimously, thank you. Next. Item on the agenda is action on the executive session minutes of June 7th, 2017. This is a vote to release.
The vote to release.
Okay.
Okay. I move that we release the executive session minutes of June 7th, 2017.
Do we need to accept them as well?
Accept and release.
Accept and release.
Okay. Any questions, comments, and discussions? All in favor? Unanimously. And first item on the new business is professional development update.
And Mr. Martineau is going to share with us what our teachers have been involved in in with respect to professional development over the summer and really, I think, some foreshadowing of what we're looking at for the year.
So that we've had another successful year of summer professional development. The planning begins in the spring with a professional development committee coming together and asking for educators across the districts to submit proposals around professional development offerings. The committee then vets those proposals, organizes the professional learning, and ensures that instructors and the facilitators have what they need. So this summer, we had 153 professional development seats occupied by Northborough educators. The topics range from world language, science, social-emotional learning, and I think it's just another example or exemplifies the commitment our educators have to their profession and dedication to their roles as educators. This is just the district offerings that educators participated in. It does not talk about all graduate-level courses and all the conferences and workshops that they might have attended on their own. I also think it exemplifies the commitment that the district has to invest in our professional staff and an investment that we believe is sound and very important. And I think one that will endure over time. So I want to thank the committee for supporting this work. And this year, we have a very robust professional development calendar plan for educators. It's started already in the month of September. You know, we have a focus on science, ELA, and mathematics, and throughout the year, educators will be engaged in professional learning opportunities offered by the district. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I admire this district for all the professional development that is provided to our staff. I think that's one of the things that makes us special. Not every school district provides their staff with what we are able to provide. So I'm thrilled that we can offer these for our staff. Thank you, and thanks for all your hard work in putting this together and making these offerings happen. Any other discussion?
No.
Thank you. I'll move, jump right into the MAS-C, MAS-S joint conference.
So each year, we take pause in the agenda to take a look at what the proposed resolutions are moving forward at the MAS-C, MAS-S joint conference. And a quick review of the resolutions that are going to be discussed at this year's conference, for the most part, have a lot to do with the Chapter 70 funding formula. In fact, embedded in almost all of the seven resolutions, there is some connectivity to the Chapter 70 funding formula. And in fact, in most instances, which is somewhat different from years past, it has everything to do about finance, with finance. I mean, from year to year, there are a variety and there are a myriad of issues that are taken up for discussion at this conference. But this year, again, you can see that first and foremost, we're concerned about funding both at a state and federal level. And so I think for those who are attending, members of the committee that are attending this year, it's one more opportunity to learn more about the changes that are proposed through the Chapter 70 Foundation Review Commission and to continue to move forward with our hopes and wishes that Circuit Breaker will be fully funded as was originally proposed and that there is Resolution Number 4 specifically, again, revisits the notion of non-public-school oversight and funding. So reoccurring themes, but always interesting to listen to perspectives and hear more about these at the conference. In addition to that, and I know in our November-December meeting, we always have a follow-up to the conference, so we'll be able to talk more about them at that time. In addition to this, it is also the time where we vote, the Northborough School Committee to be the voting delegate at the conference. Here is the official form, which we will process as soon as we take a vote this evening.
Mr. Kane, did you?
I plan on attending. I would like to volunteer as the voting delegate.
I second your volunteer.
You certainly can nominate yourself. And I heard a second on that motion. Any further discussions? All in favor? Taggart? Thank you. Thank you for volunteering for that.
Yes, thank you. It'll be interesting. Is there an alternate that we want to propose at this point?
I don't know if anyone else is going. We can always appoint one later, I guess.
Okay. So we're just going to send in the voting delegate, John Kane, unanimously approved.
Unanimously approved. Okay. And I don't know if committee, I mean, I certainly would like to have this agenda item on the next one.
Absolutely. It's the night before.
Right. It'll still be four, so we can still continue. I'd like to have it on the agenda so we can still discuss my, as before we leave this agenda item, I'll mention that I'm very comfortable with you making the vote on behalf of the committee. I mean, we could go through, we could spend time going through each and every resolution and sharing with you our feelings as committee members. I don't see the need to do that if I will entertain that, if that is a motion that other committee members wish, but I would like to publicly say I'm very comfortable with you making that vote for us.
Thank you. I don't know that we need to do it in open session. I mean, we can just read over the resolutions. If you have any notes, any changes that you'd like me to offer, let me know.
And we can always, I know that you will go to our superintendent for guidance should there are any questions about it, and I'm very confident that the two of you will make the best choice in voting on behalf of our school committee. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so now we'll move on. Busing update.
This was an agenda item that was asked to be a follow-up from the conversation that we had at our first school committee meeting of the year. And from all accounts, the situation has improved, notably so. And there are a few areas that Cheryl has been very busy working with our bus company on, and I will pass this to you.
Sure. Probably around the second week of school, near the end of that second week of school, we did make tweaks to all four elementary schools that did result in positive, they were positive results for our students. With the exception of, we still are experiencing a couple of buses at Peaslee that while they're not overcrowded by any means, they're within capacity, there are a lot of students on those buses. So we've been working with the bus company and have identified a bus that we are actually going to reallocate over to Peaslee that will, we're looking forward to that really making an even better impact. Those routes have been reworked and they are in the hands of the bus company right now. I was pretty adamant that I wanted the drivers to look at those and make sure that they were in agreement with what was there. So I expect those back tomorrow. And the schools are aware of this, and so they will get those changes and then communicate to the families before the end of the week with a start date of Wednesday, our next school day next week. So we're looking forward to those changes and hoping that this will be the additional change that we need to do.
Fantastic. Wonderful. Thank you. It's good news.
A lot of conversations with the bus company and the drivers.
Yes, and the principals.
Yes, and the principals. And we did have NRT in at Central to have a face-to-face conversation with them about some of the issues, so.
Yeah, lots of teleconferences.
And the timing is very good. So after the four days, since Monday is the holiday and Tuesday.
I didn't want to start it on Friday. I just felt that let's get the communication done and then start.
That's a good, I think that's a good call, a good decision. Thank you. So next item on our agenda, any further discussion on that?
Good.
Approval of grants and donations.
I'd actually like to turn this over to Dr. Barnhart. We've had the good fortune of having been adopted by this company for several years, and the good work by the members of this company continues in terms of their donations to the Peaslee School, so. Jill?
So for the past several years, Aspen Aerogel has donated backpacks with school supplies to us at the beginning of each year. And this year, our PTOs and the Northborough Helping Hands have really taken over making sure that all of our students have a backpack and school supplies for the beginning of the year. So when Aspen Aerogel reached out to us over the summer to say, hey, would you like us to send you some more backpacks? We asked them if they would consider taking on a different project, and this year, they provided Peaslee School with four backpacks, one each for kindergarten, first, second, and third grades. Okay, one, two, three. And each of the backpacks contains items that we can send home with children to practice what they're learning at school at home. And they'll be able to check the backpacks out for a week at a time through our library. So they contain things like number lines and pattern blocks and tangrams and phonics games and writing journals. So things that children can take home and use with their families and just reinforce their learning. And actually, Geraldine Lasordo is a member of Peaslee School Council, so she's been very active these past few years at Peaslee. So we are hoping to keep tabs on how that goes and how those are used by our students and maybe encourage that maybe some other schools could also receive something like this from community partners. So we're really excited and very appreciative. And actually, Geraldine came today for a school council meeting, and she came with a stack of boxes. And at first, when she rang the bell, we thought she was the Amazon delivery person because she had all Amazon boxes. And she was bringing additional items that they had collected and had ordered through Amazon and were bringing us some. I think today's delivery was puzzles. So we're really excited and very grateful to Aspen Aerogel for that support for us.
That's a great idea. That's a really great, I know our town library does a similar thing where you could check out a backpack, and they do it for hiking or other initiatives. But that is such a fantastic idea, and it's run, you check it out through the school library.
Yes.
We have a new librarian this year.
Yes, we do.
Do, and that's a fantastic, a new initiative and some positive, great changes and improvements, and that's a great new initiative. Congratulations on that.
Thanks.
And thank yous, please. And Aspen Aerogel, our thanks, we're very grateful for their support, and it does mean a lot to us to have those kind of extras provided to us.
I will pass that along. Thank you.
So I move that we accept the donation of the backpacks and the...
Thank you.
Donation from Aspen Aerogel.
From Aspen Aerogel, okay.
First and second, any further discussion? All in favor? Of course, unanimously approved.
Thank you.
With our thanks. Thank you. Great. We'll move on to some old business. 2017, 2018 school committee, subcommittee, and liaison assignments.
We had asked, committee had asked us to return, have this returned to the agenda as an item, and here it is for the further discussion or the list for the year.
And I did go through the policy booklet to make sure that we weren't missing anything or if there wasn't anything, I know there was something removed, and there was nothing, no, nothing to object to that in the policy or any of our policies that I could find, so I'm very pleased with this. Did we vote on this?
We did not. And we know from time to time, there may be additions as we form additional study groups, and I can think that that might be happening shortly, and so we'll make sure that we bring that forward and provide opportunity for committee members to participate, so.
This is a working document that can change over time and evolve, so.
Okay. I'm all, or we'll just, you know, in discussion.
I don't think it needs a vote. I mean, this is carried over from last year, so.
It looks good to me. Thank you. And we move into superintendent's report to the committee and enrollments that were both...
Lots of enrollment information this evening.
More distributed tonight, yeah.
It is past the October 1 date, which is always a meaningful date for us. It is the date at which point we submit to the Department of Education our enrollment numbers. And so what we have this evening is an update of the two charts that we generally distribute. One is the K-12 sort of spreadsheet-looking analysis of our October 1 breakdown. And just as a side note, from last month, there's a two-student change from all the conversations we had about enrollments last month. And so last month, as of September 1, we were at 1646, and this month, we are at 1648. And I believe that was at the kindergarten level, as I look. We had one increase at the kindergarten level, and we also had a one increase at grade 3. And that was the additional two. We also have the, through the more vertical approach to class size ratios, the handout, which reflects our current numbers, very meaningful documents that we continue to use. For the kindergarten student numbers, you'll note that there's some reference to numbers in parentheses. Those reflect the half-day students that are still in the half-day model. We did have a few students that elected, as we do each year, to move to a full-day program. And we'll be talking more about kindergarten as we look forward to the presentation on the next agenda by the kindergarten study group. And again, thank you to Sue Lawrence for always being part of that. So we, again, continue to track these very closely. You'll note that there's a pretty equitable balance of ratios across the district in the four elementary schools. And then what you also have in your packet is the enrollments. Again, it's a matter of interest. You, the K-8 numbers we've just discussed, but the numbers here reflect the overall numbers in the Northborough Schools, Southborough Schools, and Algonquin, the three district numbers. So this is something we distribute as a matter of information at this time each year as Overall, for Northborough, I pulled up last year's numbers as well, and it reflects a 105 student decrease at this time last year.
Decrease.
Decrease. We were at 1753 this time last year, and we're at 1648. And that is a K-8 number. So there's, you know, not any one particular grade that totals the 105. And when you're talking about nine grades, really, it's not a substantial number, but it is a decrease.
Do we have a pre-K number?
We have a pre-K number on this, on this chart.
On this one? Yeah, on this one, here too.
And on this, on the second.
I missed it. There it is.
So we're holding at 58.
Yeah, but the Southborough.
It's right here.
That's just Southborough.
We're holding like 58 on this spreadsheet.
There it is. I see it.
Yep. No change since last month.
Okay.
Overall, I think, as we mentioned, the numbers are up because of the addition of the five-day program, but also, you know, it was well received.
So it's 87 total, and 58 of those are Northborough.
Yep, at this time.
Always subject to change. Any further discussion?
Every day.
Yeah, I'm sure. Any further discussion on enrollments? So from this?
Also in your packets is the, as of September 31st, 30th, monthly fund expenditure report, and at this time, we would ask that we consider a vote to approve until audited.
I move that we approve the monthly general fund expenditure report as of September 30th, 2017, until audited.
Second. Seconded. Any further discussion? Questions, comments? All in favor? All right, thank you.
So I do want to take a moment just to introduce the unfamiliar face at the end of the table. And who is that guy? Everybody's asking.
She's feeling bad that I didn't do that at the beginning of the meeting.
And he is appropriately seated next to Cheryl, who has been trying in a very short period of time to share all that she knows. There's not enough time for that to happen. But Matt is the new Director of Finance and Operation. Cheryl, this must be your 119th or so Northborough School Committee meeting.
But who's counting?
But who's counting? And, you know, as we've said before, the cumulative knowledge and experience that Cheryl has managing our budgets since 2005 is tremendous, so no easy task to transition, and Matt's running as fast as he can. He's all over the district. We are bringing him to every meeting that we've had. So I see he has his notepad out, and he's probably run out of ink twice today, but he's there, and we're glad he's on board. Cheryl, I think we've mentioned this before, but she's saddened by the notion that she's going to be retiring on November 30th, but, you know, she will be, and she will be, we're not going to say greatly missed yet, because we'll be seeing her still.
Yes. We need to come to the next school committee meeting.
You still have two left or one?
One Northborough candidate.
We make our go to October 27.
So that's a little introduction.
Welcome, Matt.
And moving on to the capital improvement plan, the capital subcommittee met this Monday. It was great. We have a meeting that we actually was, we were able to add to our budget calendar, the first of many to follow. And this is with good input from Tom Mailer and certainly Cheryl.
You can take a look.
We do have a draft to share this evening. I did have an opportunity to meet with John Kader today for a couple hours. And as the word implies, draft, it is very much in that stage. He is compiling all of his information on the town side as well. And so I am, I'm sure we will be revisiting this again when we meet at the end of October. But we'll note that we have moved the Z boiler replacement forward and that there was much discussion on that, and we have adjusted, but not necessarily added, from last year's previous capital plan. It's nice to know that we've removed 18. We're working on so many of those projects now, and we accomplished much that was set out in 2017. And I did, John did mention today that the Lincoln Street School commissioning is just about done. Few more emails being exchanged, but that will wrap that project up, which is fantastic. And speaking of wrapping up projects, because this was on the capital plan for last year, is the Proctor School roof, which is, Alana's smiling, she loves her new roof.
I do love my new roof.
Just in time for the not-snow year, so that's great.
So we were waiting for the snow rail to be installed, and I haven't...
Yeah, those aren't here yet, but the roof, 90% of it's done. So it's just the snow guards that need to go on, which they said will be put on very quickly once they arrive, and we'll be ready for winter to test them out.
Yeah. And everybody's very, very excited.
We had positive feedback on Monday that the project is on budget and that the contractors have been very, very amicable and very good to work with.
Yes, very much.
Good news all around.
And Tom Mailer said that neighbors have been coming up and complimenting the look of the roof. So even the neighbors are happy with the way the roof looks, so.
It's a brown color. It's a really nice brown color.
Mm-hmm. Great. Any further discussion on the capital improvement plan draft? I mean, if this will come back again?
So we can actually hold on the vote if that's the will of the committee until we have a little bit more information, and I think that will be forthcoming by the next meeting.
Well, and it is a draft. It's going to go before John Kader and the boards, and we'll figure out how viable, you know, 2019 these items are.
It's nice that we met so early in the year.
It is, yeah. We're a month and a half about ahead of our previous schedule, so it's great.
It is good.
Well, and as we talked about, you know, each of these items that's on tap for the 2019, they're very reasonable, so.
Sizable but reasonable.
Sizable.
And necessary.
Not there in S.
So that's good work by everyone to get this moving along. And we have our budget goals. At the, at our school committee meeting last month, I did request an opportunity to meet with the leadership team, and meet we did. And we did have an opportunity to revisit all of the budget goals, and we do have some collective thoughts to share about the goals. And I can certainly share them with you all at this time.
All right.
All right. So I think general consensus is it is a, and continues to be a high priority, to as reasonably possible stay within our recommended class size ratios. I think this year was an interesting year with a number of folks that we had move in in such a very short period of time. But with the changes that we've made to the policy, we've allowed for that equitable distribution of the students that you see, so that spikes that might have otherwise been very problematic in one school or another really have sort of diminished over time and with the implementation of the new plan. However, it still continues to be a high priority for us and will be a big part of our budget conversations as always. So leaving the bullet as is makes good sense because that does drive a significant part of our budget conversations. With respect to bullet two, we do have some suggestions. Of course, we've invested considerable time and energy in the models that were present in our school, but we also realize that to stay current and to continually meet the needs of our students, that what we really are doing as part of a NASA team is to really look at meeting the needs of all learners with instructional classroom models that are research-based and reflect best practices. And so as we continue our work and we look at this being a budget driver, some of the conversations we'll have is specific to what those instructional practices might look like and how that might change what we're doing in our schools right now. So as we've discussed at the combined meeting, NASA as a team has really invested in our instructional rounds work, and that is a, pretty much a multi-year commitment. And from that work, we'll follow continuous improvement in teaching and learning in our instructional practices, and with that, we may be looking at some additional line item increases.
So do you want to change the bullet item to that statement?
Yes, as proposed.
Okay.
I do have these typed out as well.
Okay.
To meet the needs of all learners.
There you go.
Thank you.
In red. Again, proposals only.
We won't skip ahead with the other red ones, okay? We'll let you surprise us.
That's a classroom teacher strategy. Don't give it out, they'll look ahead. Again, just proposals after our conversation.
None of these are sort of new discussions, but modified to reflect our current practice. So over the years, last several years, we've been investing in new staff, particularly to address the ever-changing needs and increasing concerns around social-emotional health for all of our children. And we have staff in place, but we may be looking at increases in really providing the ongoing professional development that's so important for the staff that we have in place. And again, that ties in very nicely with changing instructional practices in the classroom. I might add that the significant part of all that PD that we presented this evening, not only what we've done during the school year, but throughout the summer, and the continued support for our teachers in a classroom setting, is not always captured in the operational budget, but rather, it's part of whether it be Title I or Title II grants. And should those grants evaporate someday, that's a significant loss for us in terms of monies and funding for a lot of the professional development.
for a lot of the professional development that we address. It's also important to note that a lot of that PD that was discussed completely aligns with the initiatives in the strategic plan. So whether it's investing in the PD for professional development around science, certainly that's something that was driven in our capital plan because we're aligning with the changes in the framework. So it is all integrated and connected.
Are those grant funds either federal or state or both?
Mostly federal.
Mostly federal, okay.
I mean, we're always looking for grant money, but grant money tends to be a one-time shot, adrenaline shot. Title I and Title II have been around for some time, but one never knows what they're going to do at the federal level. So you know, we may be moving forward with some additional professional development money in the operational budget to make sure that we have the secured funding should there be any changes. But also in fact, to increase the support that we're giving to our, the staff that we've recently put in place. So that would be a modification. Again, you know, slight change in verbiage, but significant change in focus. Where, you know, in the previous years, we were talking about adding staff and so forth. Now we're really talking about the investment in our staff that we've really welcomed into the district. The third one maintains, as you see it, maintain the district's capital assets with a special emphasis on safety and energy efficiencies. Great work. Z boiler is an example. Solar feasibility study, another. The Proctor Roof. All of these are, you know, maintaining assets, realizing energy efficiencies and making the builders buildings safe for all students. The next bullet, we still have mass curriculum frameworks and we still have district and statewide assessments. And it continues to be something that is a target for us each and every year, even though the state's assessment is a moving target from year to year. We're still on focus in preparing our students to be successful in whatever the assessments may be. And then the last one is still about the technology with a slight change of language. Meet state benchmark and district educational technology and funding goals identified in our technology implementation plan. We know we've made great strides in aligning to our tech implementation plan, which was spun out of the technology focus area in the strategic plan. It was one of the four focus areas, a cornerstone of our strategic plan. And in this case, we want to continue to make the progress that we've realized with consistent funding in the operational budget. Again, thrilled that we're at one-to-one. Thank you NEF once again for their support to augment and provide additional funding for us to realize that goal. So those are our suggested goals, budget priorities.
Well, given that we have skeleton career tonight and that this is a revision, I suggest that we put this on the agenda for next month and then make a vote on it.
I absolutely think we should continue discussion next month. I do have a couple of things.
Oh, please. Yeah, I don't want to stifle discussion. I'm just saying that...
I'm opening it to committee members first.
It's a draft.
I'm really, I'm happy that you're addressing the professional development initiatives. And I'm, of course, I am supportive of when we, when we first implemented, we first included in our goals the social emotional health. We, there was some, a lot of good discussion on social emotional learning. How can we, if we're including it in our goals, like it to be somewhat measurable? And my concern on a number of the programs and activities that we're doing to support social and emotional health is, and maybe it's not possible to measure, but I'm looking for a way that we can have more feedback on that. How can we go from the budget goals to being more measurable on report cards? How can we include more information on our... Right now, our report cards are very standard-based, which is great. And they mentioned meeting the baseline. But how can we translate our goal, if we're going to have a goal for social and emotional health, how can we translate that into being more descriptive on our report cards rather than just a, is a pleasure to have in class?
So I think that's an excellent point. And I think it underscores actually the change that is reflected in the language of these priorities, which is basically what is the best practice? And what are, what are the programs? And what, what training do we need to better fulfill those goals?
If we fund it, will it come?
That's the plan. And that's why it's a priority for us. And we've already begun, you know, through some of the work that has become embedded in the instructional rounds work. And just most recently, and Greg can speak to this if he wishes to, we've begun with our curriculum leaders. And as we know, in the large district, we've come together several times as one community, whether it was implementation of Atlas and our mapping initiative or whatnot. We've embraced a district-wide initiative and this one is to use data-wise, which is about capturing data and representing that in a meaningful way when we're talking about student growth. And so that has already begun. And that was rolled out to the curriculum leaders by some of our own principals who participated in the instructional rounds work last year. And so we've started that process. And that is the ultimate goal, so that we can have some consistency on how this information is presented, not only for dialogue by teachers, but also for parents to really digest in a different way.
And even the grant, I don't know, this carb isn't here tonight, but the grant at the middle school, that is what, a two or three-year program? But eventually will roll into the budget. So this kind of aligns with that goal there that we're committed to supporting that type of a program.
And a big piece of the grant language was about using data. So that's in process now. So as we begin to fund some of that and move some of that into the operational budget so we can sustain these great programs, you know, that's a piece of that. This year, we started two programs that we're quite proud of. And that's one at Lincoln Street, the language-based program, and the therapeutic, I switched it, it's at Z. And the ther, thank you, I saw the nods of the head. And the therapeutic program at Lincoln Street. So we've made that commitment and part of that is exactly that. So we can look forward to those conversations, but we need to do some of this work upfront. And it is somewhat of an intangible, so we need to turn this into a tangible reality for us. So I'm glad, I'm actually glad you asked it. It fit perfectly into the goals.
Yeah, well, that's why I brought it, keeping on, keeping it in line with our discussion and our budget goals. And I guess we can bring back next month?
This month?
This month.
At the next meeting, later this month.
Northborough School Committee.
And here's the good work that continues to grow. We have an October meeting under our belts for the budget. And that was the capital planning subcommittee meeting that was held this past Monday. And this will, as the liaison list changes, so will rest.
And discussion, so we all have a copy of the calendar. So no educational policy at this time. Although that does tie in what we were talking on budget goals. Policy development and/or distribution, first reads.
It's exciting, first reads. There's a number of them. It means we'll have second reads.
My thanks to the policy subcommittee for the work that they have been doing.
That was a busy morning, wasn't it?
It was a good morning.
It was a lot. So we'll start with B-150, special meeting for the inspection of buildings and grounds, which is perfect that this came up as the first policy as it really relates to the capital improvement plan in the capital planning subcommittee, which in my opinion should be, as it was in the policy, specifically stated in the policy and it's been taken out. And I know it's been kind of left as a, the school committee may designate a subcommittee to hold this meeting. Why, why is it just not automatically the subcommittee for capital planning? Because that, in my mind, just seems like that's the committee it should be, subcommittee it should be.
Well, that could be the subcommittee. Designate that subcommittee.
I think we wanted to provide the flexibility to the school committee, depending on what happens in any given year.
I do like leaving it more open. That's fine with me. And one, I don't like the wording below. It should be the other way around. The town administrator needs to come to us because state law stipulates that the school committee has oversight of the buildings.
It's just, it's just coordinating the site, does it through the town administrator? So just working out the dates. That's all it is.
It'd be shared with...
It's a collaborative, it just specifies that it's a collaborative effort.
So earlier, I think it was on Monday, we had a conversation about, we didn't actually have an inspection last year. And should I or will I suggest, based on the committee's input, some dates that the town administrator may be able to provide to his boards so that we can have that tour? And I think we identified two dates and tried to get those to piggyback on the selectmen's meeting and/or Saturday before D-led savings changes. So we might be able to get one in during the week and have greater participation.
Do you want to keep the, it's called a special meeting for inspection of buildings and grounds? Yet there's nothing in the policy that mentions it being a special meeting. Do we change the title of the policy to reflect that?
To just inspection of building and grounds?
Yeah.
We can change, take out special meeting four and just leave it as inspection of buildings and grounds, sure.
It just seems to make more sense. So that would be the only suggestion?
Great.
And I guess it's implied that if the, any of the other, any members from any of the other town boards or committees can go through the town administrator who would coordinate with the superintendent.
Likewise, the school committee can request any participation from folks other than the school councils if they chose to extend that invitation as well.
Should we include that in the policy?
Yeah, I think this is, because we took these out, I think the intent was to say...
It doesn't, it's not limited to just these.
It's not limited, right.
It could be, you know, any involved parents.
And that gives the flexibility from year to year. There might be some concerns that it were expressed by a specific group. So rather than cite who, who should be there, it implies they are the only ones invited. So I think we wanted to, again, just leave it open to allow for greater flexibility.
Make it as inclusive as possible.
Right. Back for a second read next month?
Yeah, back for a second read with a new title.
This month?
I think that's the only... Next, the next policy was B-180. I had some difficulty getting my packet today. I, why remove the two days prior? I prefer some extra time in preparing for tonight's meeting.
That was taken out because we posted, at the bottom of it, is this open meeting law cited?
In accordance with open...
It's already assumed.
So that's a part of it.
In the open meeting law.
Yep.
Okay. And that really is the most important thing, is that the agenda is posted. Okay, that's, that's a good point there.
Is open meeting law could change? So now if it changes, we don't have to...
Ah, good point. That is a good point. And my only other request was that enrollments be moved under superintendent's report to the committee. Because that's where it always falls. Sorry to be picky, but that's where it always is. I don't mind it being a separate item on the policy. It's just, it's always under the superintendent's report to the committee, so that's where it should be.
Then we should move down financial report.
Yes, thank you.
If you want to order it, kind of the way we lay out our meetings?
Yes.
Sure.
We can reorder it by the agenda, just make sure.
And then this one can come back? Or the discussion on that one? None. B-230, handling parental concerns. Just minor changes, which are fine, I'm fine with that. But is the director or assistant director of special education, student support services? Isn't that, didn't we, there's a different title for that, isn't there? I thought it was student support. I didn't think it was...
Student support service is all...
Yes, yes.
That is special, it is out.
Yes, that's my, that's what I'm trying to get at. And then are there two assistant directors right now? Or is there only one or...
There's one, but this would imply either one or we...
And then why limit to a call to the superintendent's office? Can, is there any reason why we can't change that to contact?
Nope.
No, we can do contact.
I think a lot of people would prefer to email and I don't want to take that option away and limit them to just calling.
Correctly paid.
So those are my only, my only two? Any other?
That's good.
All right, thank you on that one. And student dismissal. If a student must be, it reads, the current policy does read, if a student must be dismissed due to misbehavior or illness, the child's parent slash guardian or the designated must come to the school to pick up the child. Again, getting back to what we've been saying with keeping it open and not so limiting, can we just say if a student must be dismissed and just leave the reason?
We could.
And not limit it to just due to misbehavior or illness?
No problem with that. Looking at the principals.
Objection to that? I mean, you must certainly see students who are dismissed for reasons other than just illness or misbehavior. It could be a religious obligation. It could be a special medical or orthodontic appointment that can't be done outside of school time. And...
Playoff game.
No. Don't go there.
Buck Brady in Boston.
Exactly.
That's a good suggestion.
Any other? So these, we'll see these ones back again.
With edits.
With edits.
Thank you.
Two for distribution, thank you. These pages for my same. And we're on to audience sharing. We'll start with the audience.
Would you like to share anything? It can be anything at all. Thank you for coming.
Any principals?
So I just wanted to thank our Proctor administrators. They organized a hurricane relief collection and we had an unbelievable response to it. And we delivered five very large totes of much-needed supplies, toothbrushes, toilet paper, paper towels, wipes, things like that to, to agencies that are, that drove a truck down to Florida. And from there, they were going to be brought to Puerto Rico and to Texas. And our fifth graders were the ones who came up with the idea and organized it and helped collect and organize. So I just wanted to give a big shout out to our fifth graders for doing that because we had a wonderful response in a time of need. Also wanted to thank our PTO for bringing the Caterpillar Lab to us yesterday, which we loved. Got the idea from the Z School and we opened it for K to three. And we're definitely having them back again for the whole school. They were wonderful. They visited classrooms. They brought these amazing caterpillars and so students learned about habitats and life cycles. And it was just an amazing hands-on experience for all of our students and staff. So it was a lot of excitement at Proctor yesterday around that. And coming up this month, we have our first fund run on October 13th. So if you are interested in coming by and joining us, cheering on students and staff or participating in the run, you're more than welcome to. So it's a great way to come together as a school community and kind of wake up the minds and the bodies. And all of the proceeds from it will benefit our enrichment that they bring to us. So we're excited about that. We have, our fourth graders are starting a news club and they're going to be doing newscasts. Every few months, we're going to put together with the help of our tech staff, a news... Every few months, we're going to put together with the help of our tech staff, a newscast and we actually have a visit from Katie Brace, who's an anchor for Channel Four News, and she's going to come in and work with our fourth graders on what goes into a newscast and what reporters have to do. And so we're getting the students ready for that visit in the next couple of weeks when she comes. And lastly, we have our PTO Halloween party on the twenty eighth, a Saturday night, which is always a great family event and we get a huge turnout for that as well. So lots happening in the month of October.
Thank you, I'm glad you liked the Caterpillar Lab.
We did, yep. She brought them in.
I will kind of piggyback on Mrs. Sears' comments about the fifth grade at, Proctor, the fifth grade at the Z School, similarly raised funds for hurricane relief. They chose to go a different route, which was to research online those charitable organizations where largest percentage of the dollar goes to relief efforts and not to the top administrative salaries. So that was a piece of their puzzle, was to go in and identify those charities that will get the most dollar to victims. So we are raising money for shelter boxes, which are temporary shelters that are airdropped in, and heart to heart, which is similar to the actual toothbrushes and basic needs kinds of elements. So we've already passed two goals that they wanted to achieve, so they're on to their third goal, which is to raise over three hundred dollars from the school to split between those two organizations. So tomorrow and Friday are our last days, so if you want to stop by and jack that dollar amount up, that would be great. The kids have been very excited, they've been in my office counting money, setting new goals for themselves each time they pass one. So it's been a real pleasure to work with them, especially since they did the research on which organizations would benefit victims the most. I would like to thank NEF for bringing Erin Wu to the Z School. She is from the Center for Mindfulness at UMass Medical Center. She was at our school last week on Monday for staff meeting and then last Monday evening for parent program on mindfulness and then came in on Tuesday and worked with our students and staff on developing initial practices for mindfulness. She will be back later in the year, but we do need to thank NEF for that grant. We had our hopes and dreams all school meeting today, so we're on a positive chart, positive course for our students as they've charted out their classroom goals for the year. Three upcoming events on Saturday, the fourteenth of October, should be our annual hike up Mount Pisgah, so if you like quiet and solitude, find another day to go. We'll all be there. If you like going out into the woods with a large number of friends, please feel free to join us at ten AM at the trailhead at Mount Pisgah. Thursday night, October nineteenth, is our annual read aloud night, so you may come in your pajamas with a teddy bear or so, milk and cookies and stories read aloud by the Z School staff. And then a must-do date, which is Friday, November third, which is our coffee house that Mr. Phelps works with the students, so it is a night to not miss if you want to see some really sharp and amazing performances by the students. They've been after school, during recess, in practicing their numbers with Mr. Phelps and making sure that they're ready to go. So six thirty on November third, a must-see event at the Z School.
And at Peaslee School, we also have been working on raising funds for hurricane relief efforts and took yet a different track from my colleagues here. So our families have been purchasing Amazon gift cards. We've adopted a school in Houston that was totally destroyed and the school had to be moved, so the entire student body had to be moved into an abandoned school that had just been opened up because of a new school being built. So when their school had to be closed down because of the damage, they moved into this empty school. And some of the teachers, for example, the phys ed teacher, lost thirty years worth of physical education equipment. So many of the classroom teachers were adopted, but there were several teachers who had not been adopted. So we decided to adopt those teachers who had not been already claimed. And this effort through the PTO has raised eleven hundred dollars for the purchase of the Amazon gift cards to replace the equipment that has been lost. We also need to thank our PTO for a visit from Sally Ride, who, as you know, this was an actress portraying Sally Ride, first female astronaut in the United States. And the children were enthralled. I have never seen them hang on to every word that a presenter shared. It was just amazing. And basically, her message was, you can do anything if you put your mind to it and you work hard and you practice and you set a goal for yourself. So it was really exciting and it leads into a lot of other things that we're doing this year with our students, so we're very appreciative of that event. And October thirteenth will be a very busy day, but if you have time in your schedule, please come to our first ever ed camp for children. Our teachers in grades three, four, and five have planned an ed camp, which is an unconference. It is an opportunity for students to learn about something about which they are passionate or just interested and inquisitive. We have a number of staff and family members who are coming to offer things like kickball, knitting, exploring science experiments, green screen technology. So we have two sessions that will run with tons of activities for children, so they're just in the process of planning what they will choose for their passion events. And we would like to invite any of you who are willing and able to come that afternoon to come visit us. We will be running session one from one to one forty and session two from one fifty to two thirty, so feel free to join us.
So like my colleagues, Lincoln Street School also had some efforts put forth in terms of some of the tragic events that have happened earlier this fall around the country. So Lisa Arpino, one of our school psychologists, had a connection with a middle school in Houston, Texas, and the sentiment that she received from them was, people are throwing a lot of stuff at us and a lot of money, which obviously is much needed, but we're more than just victims, we're humans and there's feelings associated with, with all of these things as well. So our students worked on making cards for the middle school students at Cola Middle School in Houston and really did a superb job of working through their teachers to come up with really kind messages, you know, what do you say to someone who's just experienced this devastation and very, very sweet things, you know, we, we're thinking of you and wishing you the best and things will be okay, those very heartfelt messages. And Lisa Arpino delivered those to the daughter of a staff member, or the mother of a staff member there who was getting on a plane and going out there to be with her daughter. So in addition to that, also recognizing that we could do something financial as well, we did run a help for, help after hurricanes fundraiser using the American Red Cross and the Lincoln Street community raised nine hundred dollars for the Red Cross that we sent out last week. So I was proud of the students and kind of laughing at the way the donations came in, you know, in some cases it's a check written by the parents and we really encouraged the students to do a job, you know, do something to earn that money. You don't just say, Mom, I need a buck or five bucks or whatever. And one student made a little calendar that was outlined Monday through Friday and on each day, there were two quarters taped to the little calendar, so the student must have earned a quarter for each job that was done. And it was really very, very sweet and you knew that child really worked for that money and there was some great feeling behind it. So we've also been working this month on the theme of kindness and, which goes hand in hand with what you were talking about in terms of the social emotional learning, which I know is a theme in all of our schools district wide. So we had Mark, the Mass Aggression Reduction Center, come out to Lincoln Street and they ran assemblies for students in grades one through five focusing on bullying prevention and how, how to handle situations if they arise. And they also have really added a lot of good information for students about the topic of cyberbullying and even as early as first grade. And, you know, I think we've been watching these presentations for six or seven years, at least in my time here, and every year when they say, how many students have access to, you know, a device, and every year we're like, oh, you know, so many, and now it's almost like, why are we even shocked or surprised? We, that's a fact of life, they have access to these things and so we received a lot of great tips from Mark. Also, this Friday is World Smile Day. I did not know that the creator of the yellow smiley face was right from Worcester, so we are acknowledging that day this Friday with everybody wearing bright colors and with each class trying to do some kind of an act of kindness for somebody else. We've created special polar bear tickets to acknowledge acts of kindness on that day and we're really encouraging everyone to participate in one way or another. Our PTO has two upcoming events. One is our Stories in Sundays, which is much like, I think you described, Sue, an evening of staff coming and reading books to students and following that up with an ice cream sundae event at the end. And the Lincoln Street Annual Fund Day, which really is our, our biggest fundraiser and just great family event, is scheduled for Saturday, October twenty eighth. So a lot of, a lot of good things going on.
Excellent. Thank you. Sharing? How come anyone not mentioned Apple Fest? It was a beautiful day and, and the weather couldn't be any better, it was perfect and it was nice to see all of our schools represented. And we're very grateful for the middle schoolers who carried the sign for our committee, thanks to everyone who attended. It was a beautiful day, had to throw that in there. That's it for me. Any others sharing? Nothing?
I just want to comment on so much that the principals shared, you know, for, for us, I think, and at the building level, it wasn't that Apple Fest may have been forgotten, but when you look at all of the projects that they are involved in, and earlier you asked about, how do you measure social emotional health? And so much of the work that you're doing and the programs that you suggested are all about making students feel included and welcome and safe and teaching them the importance of being kind and being collaborative and being mindful of others beyond themselves. And I think all of those are very tangible evidence that that work continues in each and every school and is alive and well and walking through the schools, you can feel it, you can see it. And you can certainly listen to the excitement that all of these kinds of activities, which really are centered around being socially aware and emotionally present, bring about for all of our kids, so. Application of words often stated in programs that are underway in the schools. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think that's going to wrap up our audience sharing and we have a distribution medal for it. I see some familiar names.
Ever-changing landscape.
There are communications, district doings went out today, thank you.
Fire constant contact, new format. There is one more survey with respect to the school calendar. Worthy of note, I know it's on the agenda, that the combined school committees will meet October twenty fifth for the purpose, there might not be just a singly, singular agenda event, but for the purpose of discussing the two thousand eighteen nineteen calendar, school calendar, our school committee meetings are open and there is a survey embedded in the last district doings. It's the third of a series of surveys that we've been conducting since last year and all of that information will be shared with the committees to help inform the decisions that might be made around the school calendar for next year. So that's exciting and it will be at seven o'clock at North Brooklyn Regional in the library.
So I hope we can have North Borough School Committee members attend. I think it's going to be a very, I'm hopeful that we have some good audience sharing that evening on this very important subject of the school calendar. Going to the future agenda items, and before we jump into the future agenda items for our North Borough School Committee meeting of November, which is actually going to be on Monday, October thirtieth, I'd like to propose to my fellow committee members the possibility of a six thirty start time on that change of date, Monday, well, that, not our usual Wednesday and perhaps not our usual time. Is six thirty too challenging?
Sarah, can you make six thirty? Monday, October thirtieth. I'll go with that then, if everyone else is. You go with that?
It's still Wednesday, right?
No, it's a Monday.
Monday.
The reason for the change is the MASF and ASC conference, which is earlier than it ever has been, I think, by a week.
And considering the crazy busy week, I think if we could move up that meeting to six thirty, if there's no objections to that, I'm sure Joan, if she can make it, six thirty shouldn't be a problem. Just, you know, take it from there.
I'm going to send out another reminder with the time since they weren't...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely. Everything will have to go out earlier because of the two-day open meeting law.
Yep.
So there'll be a little bit more advanced notice as well. And I can remind members on that Wednesday...
I can assure you Cheryl, I already has it start on her calendar for the change in packets.
Okay, great. And so we'll look forward to a six thirty start time. We'll need to make sure Mrs. Harb knows for that Monday, October thirtieth. And then on that agenda, oh, it's Proctor.
It's Proctor, yes. And in your package is the list of all of the presentations.
Oh, I misread that, so Mrs. Sears, are you okay with that?
Yes, absolutely.
Are we ready for six thirty?
PTO know as well.
Okay, good, thank you. Hopefully that won't be a problem for them. And kindergarten feasibility presentation will be that evening and a technology update.
Yes, and maybe if NEF is available, an NEF update.
NEF, oh, yeah.
We usually invite them and the presentations are always exciting to hear what's going on.
Definitely welcome. And there is no...
November. Yes, I've, I've sent any request for them to join us.
Any, anything else that I'm missing for agenda items for the November meeting, which will actually be October thirtieth?
Well, the only other thing would be recognition of someone that we're not allowed to, because they might get a parent's dimension here, but other than that, I'm not even going to get into it.
We won't be putting a special.
There may be cakes. No promises, but there may be cakes.
Cupcakes anyways, cupcakes anyways.
Of course, the other items that we discussed that will be on policy and budget goals, the usual items. Okay, so approval of bills and payrolls, any other business which may legally come before the committee this evening? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Adjourn.
All in favor? Thanks, everyone.